Good evening. I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is 6:01. Let's go ahead and move to our opening. Our invocation will be led by Trustee Dayton Williams and the Pledge of Allegiance by Trustee Stacy Chase. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Madam President, I'm going to do my part to get us out of here in an hour so I keep the prayer brief.[66.15][66.15](Laughter) It is an hour, right? Please join me in a word of prayer if you so choose. Heavenly Father, you gave us another opportunity to gather here and to be a blessing through our service to your children. We thank you for your continuous protection and grace, and now we ask you grant us, as always, wisdom and discernment in all the decisions that are about to be made on behalf of the district, this great school district. Father, we ask you grant us humility in all that we do. And lastly, we ask for you, we thank you for your atonement for the sins that we've committed, confessed and unconfessed. Amen.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item 2, citizens and participation. Ms. Godfrey?
We have no one.
Perfect. Per Board policy, BED, the Texas Government Code, Section 551.007, any citizen who has signed up may address the Board regarding tonight's posted item agenda items. Since we have none, we will move on to Item 3, human resources. Dr. Knoll.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Wagaman. Well, we are here tonight for an opportunity to hire three principals, and we see all these lovely people in the room here tonight that so dearly love the folks that we're going to name tonight. We thank you all for being here. Thank you to our Board members for being here on a specially called Board Meeting Night. We do appreciate the extra time and effort that you all have put into this evening. We're going to start first with our Principal of Creighton Elementary, and this is a school that has really been performing well despite a lot of challenges at Creighton. They've been very crowded, they've had construction projects, they've had all of that, and despite all those things, they've really performed really well at Creighton. And so to hire a new principal there is a challenge because you have to bring someone in that can run at the same pace that the great staff has been running in there. And we're proud today to recommend Dr. Amy Garcia for this position. Dr. Garcia is a current Assistant Principal at Reeves Elementary, and Reeves has been, for the last two years, looking at all the data, one of, if not the, highest performing elementary school in Conroe ISD. They have done amazing work at Reeves, and Dr. Garcia has been a huge part of making that happen during her years there. So we have no doubt that her knowledge of best practices in Conroe ISD and what it takes to make a school very successful is going to make her a great leader at Creighton Elementary. So I would like to recommend Dr. Amy Garcia to be our next principal.
Second. Hey, I didn't even get to say do I have a motion.[262.14][262.14](Laughter) But since we have both, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.[274.12][274.12](Applause)
Thank you.
Is this thing on? Okay.
Yes. President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll, thank you for entrusting me to lead Creighton Elementary in this great district. I am completely humbled by this amazing opportunity. It is because of phenomenal leaders in Conroe ISD who poured into me and helped me grow that I stand before you this evening. Thank you to Nicole Walker, Dr. Winkler, Dr. Medford, Dr. Taylor, and many other countless leaders that believed in me and gave me the tools I needed to make this journey. I knew pretty early on in life that I wanted to be an educator. If you were to describe me as a kid, I was a shy, honor roll student with stringy hair and glasses that covered much of my face. I sort of just blended in with the crowd, and it wasn't until my fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Kay, invested in me and made me feel seen and heard in school. It was her who made me see that although I was quiet and reserved, I too had things to share with others. It's because of her that my goal as an educator is for every student to feel heard and seen and to recognize that their life has value to you. To the Creighton Cubs, I'm beyond excited to meet you and learn about all the great things that are happening in our school and community. My promise to you is that I will work hard every day to ensure that Creighton continues to be a place where every student feels valued, supported, and empowered to reach their full potential. To Mrs. Thacker, the current principal, I am honored to follow in your footsteps. I know that you are one who consistently strives for students to achieve at high levels. I look forward to building onto the foundation you have built at Creighton. To my Reeves family, this moment is bittersweet. The last six years, we've encountered ups, downs, and everything in between, but one thing has remained consistent: your dedication to serving and growing all students. Reeves would not have accomplished the things that it has without you. I will miss all of you, but will continue to cheer you on from the creek. To Nicole Walker, I can't thank you enough for allowing me to serve next to you. You consistently go above and beyond to create a positive and supportive learning environment and serve as a tireless advocate for students. You are a champion for teachers, not only providing them with resources and support they need, but also coaching and leading next to them. I'm incredibly proud of all the things we've accomplished together at Reeves, and I'm going to miss our morning chats. In the room tonight, you could probably hear them.[447.21][447.21](Laughter) In the room tonight are some of the most important people in my personal life: my parents, Anthony and Bonnie Craver, my husband Ben, and our two children, Penelope and Benjamin. Mom and Dad, thank you for being a constant source of support and encouragement throughout my life. I've reached great heights in my education and career that I never thought imaginable. Ben, thank you for not only being my biggest cheerleader, but also committing to this journey alongside me. Your unwavering support has allowed me to do big things in life, and for that, I am forever grateful. As I step into this new role, I am humbled by the trust and confidence that has been placed in me. I'm excited to embark on this new journey with my new school family, and I am thrilled to be able to continue to do great things for kids in Conroe ISD. Thank you.[498.33][498.33](Applause)
Congratulations.
Do your parents and families stand up?
Yeah, let's see those cute babies.
I know, so precious.[535.16][535.16](Laughter) Aww.[538.16][538.16](Applause) She's too cute. Too cute.[546.29][546.29](Laughter) All right, very well, let's keep this party going with Item B, Name Principal for Cox Intermediate.
All right. Okay. We have an opportunity to name a new principal at Cox because Dr. Debbie Spoon is retiring. I think Dr. Spoon may be here. We want to congratulate her on a great career.[565.04][565.04](Applause) There is that old saying that you can't go home again, but sometimes you can, and this is a perfect example of that. When you go back many years ago, Ms. Liz Kaler started her teaching career in Conroe ISD at Cox Intermediate, became an Assistant Principal at Cox Intermediate, and since then has moved on to other positions throughout the district, including Assistant Principal at Clark before moving out to the Candy Creek feeder and coming back to the Oak Ridge feeder as Principal at Hauser. She has gained valuable experience throughout the district. She's proven herself to be a top-notch principal on the pre-K-4 level. Now we know that she's ready for this opportunity to go back home where she started, back to her home area, and to take over the reins at Cox Intermediate as principal. So I'm proud to make the recommendation of Liz Kaler to be our next principal at Cox.
Do I have a motion?
Some moves. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations.[639.04][639.04](Applause)
President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll, it's with pure joy that I stand in front of you today as the next principal of Tom Cox Intermediate. As Dr. Knoll said, I will be finishing up my 17th year in education, of those 16 have been in Conroe ISD, and 10 of them were at Cox Intermediate. Over the years, I became very good friends with Mr. Cox and his family, and actually taught his grandchildren when I was a sixth grade teacher. He was a kind and humble man who served his community with great love. Every year, he would host a luncheon for the staff and sit and converse with each staff member as they came into the library to eat. He had a true heart of gold. It's an honor to return to a campus with such a selfless namesake. It truly feels like a full circle moment for me, and I will work each day to create a campus environment like Mr. Cox would be proud of. I'd like to take a moment to recognize my family here tonight. I'm honored to have my mom and dad in attendance. From them, I learned that if you keep your head down and work hard, good things will come your way.[710.29][710.29](Lipsmack) I'm a very emotional person.[713.23][713.23](Laughter) To this day, they still never miss a moment to tell me how proud they are of my success. My son, Colin, is currently a sixth grader at Tom Cox Intermediate, just missed him by one year, and my daughter, Kelsey, is a freshman at Grand Oaks. These two remind me not to take life too seriously and work very hard to keep me up to date on all the latest teenage trends and lingo's.[734.73][734.73](Laughter) They're also the reason I work so hard to create a positive school environment and exciting experiences for my staff and students. I always want my campus to be one that I would be proud to bring my children to. Finally, my husband, John, thank you for always celebrating my successes, reminding me of my strength, and going along with all my crazy ideas. I wouldn't be here tonight without your love and support. CISD is filled with remarkable leaders who have also encouraged me along my way. Dr. Shelley Winkler, Dr. Tara Vandermark, and Ms. Lisa Garrison, thank you for your continued guidance throughout these last two and a half years as a principal. To my Oak Ridge Principal colleagues, thank you for growing a very green principal into a confident coworker. That feeder is very lucky to have that dedicated group of leaders. To Lindsay Arduan and Shalonda Burks, there isn't a situation we can't solve together. Thank you for always listening and making me laugh on a daily basis. And finally, to my first school leaders in Conroe, Mr. Ken Sharples and Dr. Debbie Spoon, you took a risk on a very novice teacher and mentored me into successful leader. Your guidance in the first few years were instrumental to my success. And lastly, to my entire Hauser staff, there aren't enough words to describe the impact you've made on my heart and my life. Your dedication to our students' well-being and willingness to work through very difficult situations to do what's best for kids is unmatched. You lead with love, and I cannot wait to see your continued success in the future. Finally, to the Grand Oaks community and Cox Intermediate staff, I'm coming home. My family's been deeply rooted in the Grand Oaks community since 2007, and it's my honor to come back and serve my neighbors and friends. I look forward to investing in my staff, students, and community to make Tom Cox Intermediate the best place it can be. We only have two short years in intermediate schools to make lasting memories for our students, and I cannot wait to bring exciting experience to the campus. Let's go, Timberwolves. Practice that.[851.13][851.13](Applause)
Let's move on to Item 3C, Name Principal for Wilkerson Intermediate.
All right. You know, it's somewhat a blessing and a curse when you have a school that's performing really well. You know, when you have a school that's going so well, it often happens that we go and tap leaders to take other opportunities, and that's what happened at Wilkerson now a couple of times in the last few years, as Dr. Todd moved on to Stockton Junior High and most recently with Mr. Hughes moving on to McCullough. But there are constants at Wilkerson, and it starts with an amazing teaching staff. And then with that is an amazing leadership team, one of the most cohesive leadership teams that I've seen. And I think that Mr. Hughes would be the first to tell you that the success at Wilkerson goes far beyond just his leadership, but it's the entire leadership team. And so we had this opportunity now to look for a new leader. It was really an easy choice to know that the right leadership was already in the building. And just in case we weren't positive about that, the staff made sure that we were aware. But we were aware, we knew, we knew already, but it was nice to hear them echo that. And one of the things about being a great educator is when folks are special, they're special in every job. And Connie Horton is an educator that exemplifies that. You can go back to her time, many years as a choir director at McCullough, running one of the largest and most successful choir programs in the state of Texas. And that expectation of excellence has carried over into her work as an Assistant Principal at Wilkerson. You see it every day, and I have no doubt that she will continue the great work that has been started at Wilkerson, and they're just going to continue to bloom at Wilkerson with Ms. Horton as the principal. So I'm proud to make the recommendation for Connie Horton to be our Principal of Wilkerson Intermediate.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Some moves.
And a second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. For all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Showing none, motion is approved. Congratulations.[1023.23][1023.23](Applause)
President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll, August 2024 marks 29 years since I started my career in Conroe ISD as a student-teacher across the street at Conroe High. I stand before you today with a humble and grateful heart as I accept the position of Principal at Wilkerson Intermediate. Throughout my career in Conroe ISD, I've had the opportunity to work under the leadership of many wonderful principals. Thank you to Dr. Joanne Bacon, Marion Kirk, Dr. Polly Klepesky for your leadership. I would like to give special thanks to Principals Chris McCord and Jill Hauser for entrusting me with opportunities to learn and grow as a campus leader while at McCullough Junior High. To my current Principal, Josh Hughes, we stepped into our roles at Wilkerson together and have worked side by side for the last two and a half years. Thank you for teaching, supporting, trusting, and encouraging me along my journey. You have been a wonderful leader and an even better friend. I would like to thank Conroe ISD Administration for the Aspire to Lead and Principal Prep programs, which were integral to my development as a leader. I appreciate your efforts to build leadership within Conroe ISD. Thank you to Mr. Jeff Fuller, Mr. Hartwell Brown, Ms. Lisa Garrison, Dr. Edith Upshaw, Dr. Shelley Winkler, Dr. Bethany Medford, and Dr. Jeff Stickler, who have encouraged, supported, and at times gently pushed me forward on my path. Thank you to my family members who are here with me this evening: my parents, Truman and Lita Cooper, who taught me and my sister Teresa how to treat and love others and to walk by faith. My sister teaches in San Antonio and is watching online. My in-law, Cheryl and Dawn Bumpus, who are also watching online, have been a constant source of support for my family. And to my family: my husband, Bob, our daughter, Andrea, her wife, Lindsay, and our son, Ben, who are all in the Conroe ISD family. Thank you for your unconditional love, for believing in me, and for encouraging me. I hope to make you as proud of me as I am of each of you. To my Wilkerson Wildcat family, I've struggled to find words to express my feelings about leading such a wonderful team, but as a choir director, words to a song titled "Ubuntu" came to mind. The word "Ubuntu" is from an ancient African language meaning humanity to others. The lyrics are: I am who I am because of who we all are. There is nothing together that we cannot do. United for greatness, we live Ubuntu. This is who we are and what we do, and I am grateful that the greater plan is that I continue to walk down the road to greatness with you. And as I say every morning, Wildcats unite.[1217.33][1217.33](Applause)
Item 4, Executive Session. The Board will go into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.0821 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Any action, vote, or decision of the Board with regard to any matters discussed in closed session will be made when the Board returns to open session. Is now in open session at 7:03 PM. The next item on the agenda is Item 6, To Adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you very much. We are now going to shift gears and move into our workshop mode. I call this workshop of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present. This workshop has been duly called, and that notice of this workshop has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Our time is 7:04. And our first agenda item is public comment. Ms. Godfrey, have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. All right, tonight we are going to have an opportunity to hear from Ms. Karen Garza, our CFO 2.0, and she is going to talk to us about our employee benefits plan for next school year, and then also go back through the budget overview. The budget overview that you'll see tonight is very similar to the budget overview that you saw just a few months ago and that you'll see again in the next month or two. It's a pretty predictable process. So we're going to pause here just for a second while we can get Ms. Garza set up, and then we will come back and begin here just momentarily. Okay. All right, Ms. Garza, thank you for joining us. I've teed it up for you already, so I think we're ready to jump in.
All right, well, good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to provide an update with you on our 2425 benefit plan design. I have a couple of special guests I'd like to introduce this evening. Mr. Derek Echo with our Health Plan Consultant Group Gallagher is here this evening, and then Ms. Tiffany Matfield, who is our Assistant Director of HR over benefits, is here with us as well. First off, I wanted to thank Derek and his team for their guidance in helping us navigate this ever-changing and complicated topic of health insurance, and then to Ms. Matfield for her oversight of the benefits on a daily basis in the HR department. I would also be remiss not to thank Mr. Rice for his leadership and guidance over the health plan over the last several years. His expertise has been instrumental in putting us in the position that we are today in the health plan. And then to the Employee Benefits Committee for their dedication to serving on the committee and taking time out of their own personal schedules to be on that important committee, and to you, the Board, for supporting our recommendations over the years. Shows the commitment that you have to providing our employees with a top-notch health plan, and that's the goal at the end of the day, is to give them top-notch health insurance at a reasonable price. So we think you'll be happy to hear what we have to share this evening. So just a little bit of background about what is a self-funded health plan? It's a plan in which the employer assumes the financial risk for providing health insurance to its employees, as opposed to a fully insured plan where we just purchased insurance from a private insurance company. So why do we choose self-funded? It allows the district to create a custom plan to meet the needs of our employees. It does give us control over the health plan reserves. If we were in a fully insured plan and the plan had a good year, we would simply be passing those premiums on to the health insurance provider, as opposed to keeping them in the plan. And then it allows us to control who the third-party administrator is, who our providers are, and then we can choose the network that best suits our employees' needs. TRS is also a self-funded plan that many districts in the state participate in. The reason we don't choose TRS is its movement in and out of the plan is restrictive. You have to commit to five years in the plan or five years out of the plan once you make the move. They determine the rates and the providers that are available, and then the financial history of that plan has been somewhat questionable over the previous years, and we have no control over whether or not they have a good year. We do have a stop-loss policy in place to protect our plan against catastrophic loss in the event of a large claim. That includes a $550,000 deductible for individual claims and then a $5 million aggregate limit. Our district contribution is $446 per employee per month compared to the state average of $225. So that just shows your commitment to our employees to offer them an affordable health plan. So this is our plan design timeline. We met with the Employee Benefits Committee on March 6 to introduce our initial plan design options to them for the upcoming year, allowed them to ask their questions, give us some feedback. We allowed them to take that back. For a few weeks, we brought them back together on March 26 to actually review the recommendations. Again, we asked them to vote to bring those forward to you. We did receive a unanimous vote from the Employee Benefits Committee to bring those recommendations forward. We will share those with you tonight at the workshop, and then at the 16th Board Meeting, we will bring them to you for your actual approval. So just to recap for fiscal year '23, we did end the fiscal year with a $7.8 million fund balance for the health plan. That represents roughly $14 million of our annual expenditures. We are in year three with Blue Cross Blue Shield, so our move to the HMO model has proven to be very successful. The plan is running very efficiently. This money does belong to the plan. It belongs to the employees in the plan and is to be used to subsidize the plan in any way we choose. This is our planned performance year-to-date. You saw this at the last Board Meeting. We are running a surplus in the plan of just over $2.4 million for the year, so we're running very efficiently. We will need this surplus going into the summer months, as those are our highest utilization months, but we are in really good shape moving into the summer months. Just a high-level overview, these are the three health plan options that we currently offer. We have our high deductible plan, which is our Blue Choice PPO plan, our Blue Essentials HMO plan, which is a broader network of providers, and then our more narrow network, the Blue Premier HMO plan that includes Memorial, Herman, and St. Luke's.
On the screen, you will see a category of the 2023-2024 year-to-date performance of your plans, and we want to show you, based upon how your plans are running, to understand where we want people to make choices. And the reason that these plans are running better than the others is not just restrictive networks, but it's the thought process behind the plan designs. So with a high deductible health plan, individuals pay up to the deductible, and they have to make consumer-driven choices, which is why it's running at a $412 per employee per month cost on average. Then you have your Premier HMO versus your Blue Essentials HMO. Then you have your premier HMO versus your Blue Essentials HMO. Blue Premier HMO does offer a smaller, more narrow network where we see people more focused on specific places that can bring higher quality of care but also lower costs to the district. And as you can see, that's also running at a much better per employee per month level than the Blue Essentials HMO. Altogether, the plans are running excellently. But when we talk about our changes this year, our plan design opportunities on how we can enhance the plans, we are looking at an opportunity to enhance plans that would continue to benefit the district and also the employees. So we're going to make those plans better so that employees have more of an incentive to choose those to continue the high performance of the plans as we've seen in the last year. Go ahead. I'm Derek, Derek Eko. Nice to meet you. Yes. Eko, yes. Like the system. Correct, yes. That's the number of subscribers. Yes. All of the costs to the district and to the employees are all bundled into that cost. So assume that it includes the fixed costs, the cost of administration, the cost of the stop-loss policies that come from you all, as well as the cost of the claims that come out of those. So the claims are going to make up your largest percentage of those overall costs. Yes, correctly. Yes, correct. Yes. The stated district contribution was on the previous slide. And we're going to see it in a few minutes when we talk about the benchmarking where your stated contribution is versus the neighboring districts around you all and competitive districts that you would consider to show you where you all level out from a district contribution for employees. You're welcome. So on this page is a budget projection. Instead of going line by line through that, because I don't want you all to fall asleep, I will say that a lot of methodologies go into this, but this is our means of underwriting your plan by taking the data that comes out of it from a medical and pharmacy perspective and then applying trend on a regular basis. So just as inflation is continuing to grow, so is trend on the medical and pharmacy side. The trend on the medical side is around 8% and the trend on the pharmacy side right now our underwriters are using at 11.6. Let's just say 12 to make that easy. So we utilize those methodologies to be able to understand what we expect your plan to run at for the year. And we have those impacts written there. Once we break those all down, we assume that the incurred claims cost for you in the next budget year is $53 million roughly. Then we take your fixed costs, which are the exact fixed costs to the district. Those are contractual obligated costs. We don't have a standard bearer because claims are going to move in and out who utilizes those plans. You already have the agreements on your administrative costs. We did increase the RX rebate guarantees through the most recent connection with Prime. That was through our pharmacy RFP that you all saw last year. And then we also apply a trend to your individual stop-loss level. 20% is a conservative estimate. It can be a little higher, it can be a little lower. It just depends on how the pharmacy or the stop-loss comes back. That comes back towards May for you all because they have to have extra data to be able to understand that. We take the total fixed cost for the year, which we assume for you all next year will be around $492,000. And we add those all together and we get an annual budget projection of about $53,620,931. Last year, we budgeted, or technically current this year, $55 million roughly. So we assume that the budget surplus for next year is going to be about $1.4 million, which is great in you all's favor. This goes with the thought process on what you all have from a surplus currently. And remember, we do assume that we will eat into that surplus over the summer months, but we believe next year we will move into, the district will move into this place with about a $1.4 million to enhance, to give more opportunities to the plan. And so we have made-
Excuse me, is that through a rebate or how is that?
Through lots of different options. But yes, part of the reason that we have seen a larger position on this is because of the rebates. As you can see up there on the fixed cost position, you can see the rebates did increase almost $16, and that did bring down the overall fixed costs. That does help the district a lot. We also have seen just a great claims year from the last two years based upon the utilization through the HMO models, right? As we put a gatekeeper in place that ensures employees are going to a primary care physician that directs their care, we see greater utilization of the plan or better utilization of the plan to push people into better cost of care providers that have quality metrics. Because what we see is places that don't have quality are going to cost the plan more because you're going to have higher recurrence rates, problems with surgeries, that people get infected, right? So these type of quality metrics that we see come out of an HMO model where physicians are directing care really does help impact the plan. So based upon the $1.4 million worth of surplus, along with your benefits committee at the direction of multiple of the benefits team here, we wanted to look at plan enhancements, ways to utilize that money and invest it back into your employees and make sure that our plans continue. Surplus. Correct. Yes. Yes, we anticipate that you will run at a $1.4 million surplus.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand the surplus terminology. Ms. Garza, on that first slide, I mean our trending slide, it shows 2.7 million dollar surplus. We're running a surplus, which you anticipate during the summer is going to go down to what number?
Maybe less than a million.
So that's about 1.4.
We could eat into all of it.
So that 1.4 plus this is what we're going to be considering as surplus. Is that what you're saying?
No, the 1.4 is the end result of the number that we've currently projected at 55 million and what we anticipate moving forward into next year.
So that's not really a surplus?
Yeah, it is, well, it is assumed surplus. Let's say that.
But your number is a surplus.
It is a surplus, yes.
I got you.
Difference, yes. We project, right? We're guessing-
With $7 million fund balance, which is-
Correct, 7.8.
Okay, I'm good now.
Okay, good, cool, sorry. So essentially, we are looking at these plan enhancements set here as a recommendation. The first plan enhancement is to the Blue Choice PPO High Deductible Health Plan. And what we are looking to do is to add an annual health savings account contribution where we would provide $500 per enrolled employee. So if you enrolled in this plan, you would get $500 put into a health savings account. Now that is a set loss for the district because that $500 that goes into a health savings account is totally out of your hands now. It is in the employee's account and the employee owns that account. They can continue to save that money or they can utilize it to pay for medical benefits. They can also utilize it to pay for specific dental or vision benefits as well. But this directly impacts the employees. It gives them a $500 amount to utilize towards benefits or to use as they see fit. Additionally, along with this, and this is towards every single plan, we are recommending to add hearing aid coverage, which has not been covered by the district. And this hearing aid coverage would be set to a maximum of $1,000 and that maximum would go for 35 months, okay? That's pretty industry standard as how they would do it. And the assumed cost is taken by Blue Cross Blue Shield. They've written and underwritten it for us. Additionally, we've looked at adding cochlear implants along with those hearing aid coverages. And that's to every single plan, not just the high deductible health plan. For the Blue Essentials Plan, we are looking at moving the out-of-pocket maximum that currently sits at $7,350 and $14,700 down to $7,000 and $14,000 respectively. This is to get more in line with benchmarking but also to give some enhancement to the Blue Essentials Plan that while it is not running as great as the other two plans, continues to perform admirably and to what we would like to see with your plan moving forward. Additionally, for both of the HMO plans, we are looking to adjust the durable medical equipment benefit. And the reason for that is because for some reason within the plans over the course of the time, it has set at a co-insurance level of 50%. That is not matching the total plan contribution from the co-insurance perspective. And so we are recommending that we change that now that we have a surplus to move it into a place that it matches the total co-insurance of the plan. So instead of being at 50%, it would match the plan on the Essentials Plan as well as the Blue Premier Plan. Makes it a little easier, people don't question this anymore. And then lastly, we are looking at enhancements to the Blue Premier Plan. The Blue Premier Plan, we are looking at enhancing multiple areas to make it more usable and more exciting for employees to jump into. First is to change the copay for the primary care physician. That is the gatekeeper. Every employee does have to go to this. And that would change it from $35 to $20, saving employees $15 a month every single time. We are looking at changing the annual deductible down to $900 for an individual and $2,700 for the family, which is down from $1,203,000 for the family currently. We're also looking at changing the out-of-pocket maximum. That out-of-pocket maximum is currently set at $6,250 and $12,500, and we're looking to move it down to $6,000 and $12,000. We are looking at all of these items based upon the benchmarking that we will see in a few minutes to continue to make the district at a more competitive advantage to neighboring districts and to ensure that we're competitive even to TRS districts and the stated benefits that they have. As with the other ones, we are also implementing or hoping to implement the hearing aid coverage as well as the durable medical equipment coverage.
So this is a side-by-side comparison of the recommended changes. The column on the left hand is the current benefit options, and then the column on the right is our recommended 2425 benefit changes. They are highlighted in red, the options that are changing. And then this is our premium recommendations. We are happy to announce that we will be able to leave premiums as they are. Right now, the bottom portion of this slide here shows the contribution breakdown that makes up the $55 million contribution between the district's contribution and the employee contribution. To give us a total estimated funding for the book of business of just over $54.6 million, this does include the plan enhancements that were provided on the previous slide. So we would be utilizing roughly $1.1 million of that $1.4 million in surplus with the enhancements that were discussed on the previous slide.
Yeah, you're saying over the course of the total employee count.
Correct, correct. Right, and the thing about the $7 million, that does represent about 14%. We know how quickly that can, right? Correct, correct. If we realize the 2.4. I mean, that is yet to be seen. Correct, correct. If we were to, across the board, put that 1.4 million into premium reductions just straight across the board, it would mean a $20 per month reduction in premium. The thing about that is if we have a bad plan year, we'd be going back and asking them to increase again or taking that decrease back. Well, if we were to reduce premiums this year and then next year the plan had a rough year and we had to eat into fund balance and weren't feeling good about where we were going with the plan, we would have to then turn around and increase premiums again. So the thought process this year was to, let's put it into plan enhancements to make the plans more desirable, to get the employees moved towards those plans that are performing better. And if we see another year with a surplus plan performance, then we could look at maybe doing something with the premiums next year that would be a little more substantial.
Mr. Williams, can you get to your mic? Because I just have a hard-
So I get that, but in an environment where I'm concerned about premiums, where I, my business, I make sure the premiums stay whole for my employees year over year, and I eat the difference because we see the cost increasing. But for teachers, understanding that the pay increases were minimal, et cetera, so how can they actually take more money home without us giving them money is we can reduce their expenses, right?
Sure.
The cost of insurance, that's what I'm looking more toward. So I'm saying from a retention and attraction standpoint, attractiveness standpoint, from the HR side of house, what do employees look at? Are they diving into the details of the enhancements or they stopping short and just seeing what the premiums are and what they can afford each month? But I appreciate the effort that went into that, but I'm still concerned about how far do employees get. It's like, I deal with a lot of truck drivers. If you take $5 out of their check, they lose it, right? Regardless of what offset and benefit potentially could be, I mean, I can give them a $5,000 match on their 401K. You take a dollar out of their check, that's a problem. Keep the five, I want the dollar. You see what I'm saying?
Right.
So, but you got to get past that.
Maybe, let me just add anecdotally a little bit, is sometimes I think teachers hyper-focus on the pay plan and don't pay enough attention to this because we're going to see in the next couple of slides is kind of how our insurance rates compare to some peer districts. And I've witnessed people leave here to go take a $500 raise at another district, but their insurance premiums go up $1,200 for the year.
Okay.
And they never notice it. Now, the other thing, and I'm just going to say anecdotally, what do people really pay attention to? I feel like, and you can correct me Tiffany if I'm wrong, what they really pay attention to is, is my doctor on the plan?
He's on the plan.
You know, like, it's all great to want to, you know, like, I sit here, you know, my family's on these plans too, and so I'm on the one that's the premier or whatever. I'm sitting here looking at the Blue Essentials thinking, all right, we made it better. And then the first thing I thought of was, if my wife's doctor's not on that plan, we're not moving. And I don't care what you did, like, nothing's going to change because her doc, we're staying wherever her doctor is and she's happy, that's where we're staying. And Tiffany, you might feel it's that way, or Darren, I don't know.
So with that being said, I'm comfortable with it because, I mean, the mere fact that insurance premiums aren't going up is great. I think that's a win. And then you're adding the, what you call them, the plan enhancements. In addition to that, it's great. I just wanted to make sure that we hadn't tested that thought process well. So I'm good with the approach.
And I think, Trustee Williams, to your point about more money in the pocket, there was the plan with the copay reduced, right? So that's a direct impact to expenses, right?
That was $15, right? Correct, the copayment.
Yeah, but y'all got to get them to understand that, you know?
Right.
Well, when you're sitting at the doctor's office and checking in, you understand it.
How are we communicating this? Is it included in their contract or yearly contracts or how are we communicating?
Well, when we roll out the employee handbook in the summertime, the benefits handbook, this will all be highlighted in there. We'll make an effort to make sure it's in the newsletter and to communicate to our employees what the changes are.
So is there a new handbook every year?
Yes.
Yes.
Could you go back to that slide that had the benefit enhancements? Yes. So in order in the premier plan, it's the same as it's always been, I'm asking, not stating. Is it the same as it's always been that they have to go to the primary care before they go to the specialist, right?
That is correct.
And so that's great that they're saving $15 that go towards their going to the premium up, the next level, specialist level, whatever.
That is some of the feedback that we received from our operations group was, you know, that primary care does serve as the gatekeeper, so you do have to go to that doctor to be referred to as specialist. So this will be actual savings to our employees that are utilizing the plan, so.
Do we have, do we know, I guess I should, maybe this goes towards you, I'm not sure. I know that there's been a real struggle of getting into primary care doctors, that, for instance, when I take my mother-in-law to her primary care doctor, they're being required by all of these plans to see so many more patients that they have no business seeing before they can actually go on to the specialist in their area. So are we increasing any doctors in this area?
Making sure I'm not speaking out of turn here. The answer is yes, there's constantly an increase of doctors and influx up here. Take for instance, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Once you all signed on the dotted line with Blue Cross Blue Shield, their network team was out here and- their network team was out here in droves consistently and working hard to attract new providers specifically within the premier HMO and the Essentials HMO model to ensure that there was providers. That has continued to grow. Your team here, specifically your HR team, have regular bi-weekly now, but with weekly conversations with Blue Cross specifically regarding multiple network items. So if there was any planned disruption because individuals couldn't get in there, we were dealing with it at that moment with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And if there was issues with regards to how a physician was charging or working within that model, they also were dealing with it as is. So from a Conroe perspective, you were continuing to grow in this area, specifically all of this area from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And from a provider access network, you don't have a better access network than Blue Cross Blue Shield up in this area because of how they work specifically once you get to more rural areas. And so when we see this area, when you kind of move outside of the cities, Blue Cross has the largest network within those, so, yes.
Quick question, Mr. Eco. Regarding the health savings accounts, just silly question maybe, but for instance, if I don't need the hearing aid coverage, can I put some additional funding into the HSA?
So the hearing aid coverage would be added to the plan regardless of your HSA contribution. They're separate portions, right? So right now, written in the plan, hearing aids are just not covered. So if I went into the doctor, and actually, we've only had two denials for this so far in the last year that we can track through Blue Cross Blue Shield, but the plan does not currently cover anything. So whether you're in the high deductible health plan or any of the HMOs, it wouldn't cover a cent for those. With the HSA contributions, that is a contribution that goes directly into a bank account, a health savings account, and that is in the employee's name. Now, if you as the employee want to continue to contribute more, you can contribute up to the IRS maximum on a yearly basis. And so you can utilize your funds, you can continue to take pre-tax dollars and put it into that account.
No, I get that, I was just asking if I choose not to take hearing aids, could some of that funding go into my HSA?
No, no, that's, it's, it would be the same as, I didn't use this part of the plan, could I take that dollars back from the premium? And that would be great if that's how healthcare worked, right?
I was trying.
Yeah, right? Do we still have the teledoc virtual visits for, what's the, what is the co-pay on that for our employees? If they want to see a virtual visit?
It's free, under all of our plans right now.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm doing that. That's great, too, and they're.
It's a great benefit.
They're pretty easy to get into as well, like, they're not, it's not, they're accessible, which is awesome.
Any time of day, any day of the week, yes.
Mr. Rice, I know that you've got a lot of years in living in this world. Is there anything you would add to any of this conversation of, with your experience?
I think there were good questions, I think it was answered properly.
Okay.
He called you old.
Started young.
On the screen, you're going to see district benchmarking data. Now, we have taken the data as much as we can get. I will say, at some points, we pulled this information from certain places like Zoom Info to be as exact as we can be. It is not always exact. You are probably well aware of how your district's website goes, and sometimes it says that you have, you know, nine thousand two hundred and forty-one individuals, and sometimes it says fifteen thousand, because that can include part-time employees and all the way down that aren't benefit eligible. So on this first page of benchmarking is an outline of neighboring districts or competitive districts that we would consider based upon your size and what they have from a medical plan offering and how they run from a plan funding offering. So how many plans are they offering? What type of plans are they offering? And the plan funding. So most are all self-funded. There are multiple districts in the area that are with TRS, and as Karen mentioned before, that is a self-funded mechanism, but it works a little bit differently than how we see this here. And then as you can see, you all are well within the number of plans. You continue to have three, or multiple people within the area have more, or have about the same. This is really where we like to call a lot of the attention, because this shows your contributions. It shows your average contribution, or it shows your total ISD contribution to every employee at four hundred and forty-six dollars. Shows your average contribution between all of the plans for employee only at one thirty-two, and then your average employee for all family costs every single plan at one thousand fifty-one. And as you can see, versus multiple other districts in the area, basically everyone that remains close to you, aside from UMBLE, you all are well within or better than a contribution basis for both employee and employee family. The outlier there is, there's a few outliers there, but in general, you all are running much better than your competitors.
Can you explain the UMBLE one? Because I jumped off when I saw this, like, I need to understand it.
So, UMBLE has a different plan funding methodology than you all do. They have utilized what is determinately called a reference-based pricing model that does have a lot of impact on the plan and specifically to the members, because you're utilizing Medicare as a repricing model for it. Now, instead of getting into too much of the detail, that does bring plan costs down significantly, but it does change how you access a network, and it does change how your members access their insurance, because they have the right and potential to be balanced billed at every single time they go to a doctor or get surgery, because you're utilizing Medicare as a standard price. And if the individual physician or surgeon says, I'd like to charge more, then that puts the employee potentially at the hook. Now, there are mechanisms to help deal with that, but that's the reason why UMBLE has been at a lower cost versus you all. They offer a substantially less benefit, in my opinion, than what you all do utilizing and leveraged network through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas.
And they have a tighter network, fewer doctors spread out?
Yeah, network, they're not leveraging a network on a regular basis, so it looks a little bit differently on how you do. This is the benchmarking per plan for high deductible health plans in the area. As you can see, there are two districts within the area that we are competing, that we are showing you all against that do have a healthcare savings account seed money, is what we would call it. Yaldean and Fort Bend. And Fort Bend, that is a more recent ad that only happened in 2024. Your Essentials plan is being marked against the other broad network plans. While it is a sharper network, it does have a larger, broader base, and so we wanted to compare it versus others. And as you can see, you run very well versus the others, even considering the primary plus on TRS. But we did want to enhance that out-of-pocket maximum to get more in line with what we're seeing from competitors, not just from here, but also neighboring competitors and what we would show on that side. And this is the plan that we've marked up the most. As you can see, here's the premier versus multiple other areas with a narrow network plan. And these narrow network plans, really in the areas, we're looking at Kelsey and Memorial Hermann as the more, as the most prevalent. And this really puts you in line with multiple of the other districts. And also, when we go back to that other slide with that TRS, it puts you well in front of the TRS benefits, which is what, when you have multiple districts around you all, surrounding that with TRS, we want to make you all look bigger, greater, better.
All right, so what's next? We will bring these recommendations to you for approval at the April workshop, or April regular board meeting to approve the plan design and the premium recommendations for next year. And if any of you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Ms. Carza?
Yes.
You said the, this was unanimous?
Correct.
Okay. What other things did y'all explore?
For, with the benefits committee? We did talk about the premium topic. It did come up at the employee benefits committee, and we kind of talked through that. The reason some of these items were in the enhancement things, or these are things that Ms. Matfield in her office has been hearing from people on the hearing aid coverage and the durable medical equipment. Those are things that they've been hearing feedback from employees on, and that's why they were included. And then the other ones were just at the direction of Gallagher and what would make us more competitive with our surrounding districts. Okay, thank you.
This is just kind of an out-there question. Based on the age of most teachers, being on the younger side or middle to younger, and that's an assumption, because I really don't know our stats in the district that well on that. The hearing aids was more than, say, something, and I don't even know on the plans, because I'm not on them, say infertility treatments or anything like that, having money towards it. Do we have that in our plans?
Speaking to this, so just so you know, the cost to add that hearing aid benefit at a thousand dollar maximum or thirty-five was incredibly small versus the other items. And so it was, that enhancement was discussed to add because of the noise that we have heard, employee complaints, adding an infertility benefit or something of that nature, which I think is incredible. And we actually have many vendors that are working in that space, is also incredibly expensive. And so to be able to value and to work into that would add, you know, a significantly greater number to the plan. Not that it doesn't mean that it shouldn't be discussed or looked at, but the hearing aid was out of that discretion and a low cost to the overall plan.
It was in the expense, what we could afford to include?
Yes.
Okay, and there was a request for it, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
A lot of the reason it's come up in the last few years is because in 2017, there was a bill passed in the state that required many plans to provide that coverage, but our plan is not subject to mandating the coverage, and so that's why it continues to come up every year with providers in the community that are telling employees, no, you should have the coverage, and our plan does not.
Okay, all right, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Ms. Matfield, thank you. All right, we're gonna keep rolling here and move into our budget presentation. And one of the things we talk about is, there's not a lot new here from what we discussed a few months ago. We are exactly where we knew we would be, based on November, you know, and we made that decision to invest in our employees, which we certainly still all appreciate the fact that you did that. We knew that that was, what that was going to have an impact on next year's budget as well, so we're gonna see exactly how that is going to impact us. And I think that Ms. Carza has a few additional items for us to look at, some spending in some of our specialty areas as well, just so that we can have an idea of how we're spending our money, so. Ms. Carza?
Good evening, thank you once again. And as Dr. Knoll mentioned, we will continue the budget discussion that we had at the February workshop. Like you mentioned, not a lot has changed. We are exactly where we thought we would be. So moving into our presentation, as always, we like to share our awards that we receive. We're proud of our transparency and financial reporting awards. As you can see, the comptroller has rebranded their transparency stars. They have a fresh look. We continue to receive our transparency stars for traditional finances, debt obligations, and contracts and procurements. Our two newest awards are from the Texas Association of School Business Official on the left-hand side of the screen. For excellence in financial management, we are one of thirty-two districts statewide to be recognized for this award. And then our purchasing award of merit, we are one of seventy-seven districts across the state to be recognized for this award. And then as always, our financial reporting awards from ASBO and GFOA. Moving into our budget objectives for twenty-four, twenty-five, we want to meet the needs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We are opening Bartlett Elementary this coming school year. We wanted to continue to provide support to our campuses and departments, and as always, provide a safe and secure learning environment for our students and staff. So looking at our budget challenges moving into next year, of course, the lack of action by the legislature during the eighty-eighth legislative session and four subsequent special sessions. There still is no funding mechanism in the funding formula to provide a raise for our employees or address inflation, managing growth, and then working through the financial impact of the November twenty-twenty-three employee raise. Our preliminary budget assumptions, nothing has changed on this slide since we discussed this in February. We talked at great length in February about that overall enrollment projection number. A lot of thought is put into deciding on what this number is, and we shared, you know, if we project too high on this number, there's financial implications. If we project too low, there's curriculum implications, because we're trying to hire staff at a time that is not optimal. Our ADA percentage, we will continue to use ninety-two point five. We are currently still using five point seven five percent property growth. We are hoping to get values from the appraisal district in the coming weeks to see what growth looks like for next year. And then we are projecting no change in our tax rate at ninety-six twenty-one. So this is a historical look at our attendance data for the current, or the projected upcoming year in the previous nine years. I'll direct your attention to the last line with the arrow, that is fiscal year twenty-five. We're using an enrollment projection of seventy-four thousand students and our average daily attendance of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty. I just wanted to share a little bit of information about the difference between average daily attendance and enrollment. We are funded by the state based on our average daily attendance. And in its most simplest form, this is simply days of attendance divided by the actual days of instruction. So if there are a hundred and seventy-four days of instruction in the school year, and a student comes to school every day, we earn one ADA for that student. Our current ADA percentage as a district is running at about ninety-two point five percent. So every one percent loss of ADA costs the district about four and a half million dollars. Whereas on the enrollment side, that's the actual number of students in seats. Our expenditure budget is based on enrollment, and our classrooms are staffed based on enrollment. So our revenue budget is based on ADA, and our expenditure budget is based on enrollment. And this seven and a half percent gap in funding is worth about thirty-three million dollars to the student. So to put that in perspective, the basic allotment is six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, so we are essentially funded at about fifty-seven hundred dollars per enrolled student. This is our enrollment trend, just in a graphic form. This is our tax rate component, our current tax rate at ninety-six twenty-one. The maintenance and operations portion of that rate is at seventy twenty-one. The debt service portion is twenty-six cents. Our M and O portion is used to fund the day-to-day operations of the district, such as salaries, benefits, utilities, fuel. And then the debt service portion of that tax rate is used to fund the principal and interest payments on our debt. This is our tax rate history going back to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and as you can see, it has continually decreased, and that is a result of House Bill Three. And the tax compression, the rate has gone down almost thirty-two cents over the last six years at our current rate of ninety-six twenty-one. This is our Houston area tax rates. We are represented in the red here at ninety-six twenty-one, the third lowest in the Houston area. The dark blue or the navy blue represents our local Montgomery County school districts, and then the green bars are our peer districts. And then this is a breakdown of our projected tax rate. At the five point seven five percent growth in property value, we are projecting continued compression on the M and O side of two cents. If it does grow more than that, we could see more compression on the M and O side. We're using a conservative growth number right now. And then on the debt service side, moving from twenty-six to twenty-eight cents, a two-cent increase that was approved by the voters with the passage of the twenty-twenty-three bond. So we are projecting an overall change in the tax rate of zero for next year, and it could potentially go down if we grow higher than five point seven five percent in AV growth. This is our twenty-four, twenty-five funding estimate. The first two lines are local property tax collection information. The first line, we will see an actual decrease in local property tax revenue for next year, and that is a result of the implementation of Senate Bill Twelve, which is the recalculation of the frozen ceiling for our over sixty-five residents. And that is simply a shift in revenue from local tax collections from, to the state of Texas, and you'll see that below in the thirty-two million dollar number. Our five and, five point seven five percent value increase would generate an additional ten point five million dollars. And then our student growth and that shift of revenue from Senate Bill Twelve in the state funding side generates thirty-two million dollars. We did see a slight increase in the golden penny yield that generated an additional one point five million dollars. And then our teacher incentive allotment program continues to grow. This is essentially a pass-through program. We get money from the state, and then it's passed on to our teachers that are designated through that program. And then our TRS on behalf, which is also a pass-through program, one point seven five million. So a total estimated funding increase of twenty-two point three three million. So this is our fund balance analysis. I took a little different approach to this to show you. Our current budget that was adopted this year is six hundred and seventy-two point seven million. We like to keep twenty percent of that in reserves in our fund balance. That would represent about a hundred and thirty-four point six million. We are projecting ending fiscal year twenty-four with an unassigned fund balance of a hundred and fifty point three million dollars. This does assume the eighteen-eight returning from the Capital Projects contingency fund. That would put our current capacity based on our current budget at fifteen point seven million, or our fund balance at twenty-two point three percent of the current budget. So now moving to the expenditure side of the budget, I just wanted to do a high-level overview of our allocation process. We are ninety percent payroll, so this is a very important part of our budget process. As always, we start with that total enrollment number. We use the demographer or PASA study as kind of our guide in determining where we want to set that number. And then from there, the individual campus enrollment projections are refined for all grade levels for both gen ed programs and bilingual programs. Those enrollment projections are then loaded into our allocation spreadsheets, and then formulas are applied to enrollment. into our allocation spreadsheets, and then formulas are applied to enrollment projections to determine staffing necessary to support enrollment. So like I said earlier, we're 90% payroll, so we are essentially zero-based budgeting here because everything is set back to formulas and then staffing is refined from there with our deputy superintendent and our grade level area superintendents based on individual campus needs. These are the staffing formulas that we use, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this, but I just wanted to show you the level of detail that goes into this process, is it a very labor-intensive process and one that we feel is very important to ensure that we have equitable staffing among all of our campuses every year. You see all the different grade span areas. So now I'm gonna shift gears a little bit and move into our special program spending requirements, these are all of the various allotments that are included in the tier one portion of our foundation school funding formula, our regular program allotment at 6,160, and then you can see all the special program allotments that we get to service those groups of students, the ones that have percentages next to them are subject to compliance requirements in terms of spending. So the state is saying, if I give you a bilingual education allotment, you have to spend at least 55% of that allotment directly servicing bilingual students, and they go through a compliance process every year based on data that we report through PMS to ensure that we are actually spending the allotments appropriately, so this is actual compliance data for 2223. The green line represents the amount of the allotment that we received that year from the state in the general fund, the light blue line represents the compliance spending requirement for that allotment, whether it's 55% or 100%, and then this blue line represents what we actually allocated towards that allotment. So you can see that there is a clear outlier here in terms of both amount of spending and percentage-wise, and that's in our special education department. In 2223, we received just over $47 million from the state to support our special education students, and we spent in excess of $93 million supporting that group of students, so I share this information with you because this is an area that is gonna have a tremendous financial impact on our budget going forward if the state doesn't do something to fill this funding gap, and we are not alone in this area, this is statewide. This is our special education student count over the last several years, and you can see tremendous growth in this area, from 23 to 24, we grew almost 2,000 kids, we are projecting that same level of growth for going into fiscal year 25, so to put that into context, in fiscal year 23, we spent an average of $11,000 out of the general fund on special education students, if we were to maintain that same level of spending, that would mean an additional $22 million in the budget to support that growth of 2,000 students, and we all know that the funding is just not there to do that, so just wanted to bring that to your attention because that is an area we're gonna have to really keep an eye on moving forward. And then moving into our personnel allocations, this is the allocation process that I talked about, at the campus level, 66.5 FTEs at a cost of $4.7 million. Our support positions, 10 of those at a half a million dollars, the majority of those are custodial staff for our Bartlett Elementary opening. And then special education, we are projecting that we're gonna need 73 FTEs in the general fund at a cost of $5.7 million. We've got these broken down into two categories, the first is $3.5 million worth of positions that we're gonna have to bring over from our IDAB fund, that is a federal grant that we have been receiving for many years, but the growth in our special ed population has grossly outpaced the amount of the allocation that we're receiving in that grant, and we can no longer sustain the funding of all of the employees that we have in the grant. So we are bringing those to the general fund, this is a fluid number, we have not received our allocation yet for next year, if it comes back better than we thought it was, we may be able to adjust this, we do have a small amount of growth built into that number just based on what we have been seeing, so if we are pleasantly surprised, we might be able to adjust this downward some, but right now, this is what we're looking at. And then an additional 27 new FTEs to support other areas within special education, the majority of those is dyslexia and special ed teachers at a cost of $995,000. So total special ed FTEs, 73 at a cost of 5.7, so brings our total FTE change for next year to 149.5 at a cost of $10.8 million. So then moving to our overall expenditure increase, additional personnel for growth that we just talked about, 10.87 million. Our salary schedule, teacher step adjustment, this is just a step teachers for years of service so that we have a functioning teacher salary scale at a cost of $1.6 million, the offset to our teacher incentive allotment, the payout to our employees at $1 million, and then our other expenditures, utilities, fuel, insurance, Montgomery Central Appraisal District fees that we discussed at the September board meeting last year, and then supplies at 3.3 million, and then the offsetting entry for TRS on behalf, so total expenditure increase of 18.52 million. So putting that all together, this is the combined budget, both the revenue side and the expenditure side, beginning revenue of a 672.7 million, revenue increase of just over 22 million brings our total estimated revenue available of 695.10. On the expenditure side, our beginning amended expenditure budget, this does include the amendment for the salary increase and then the payroll accrual adjustment that we talked about at the February workshop and the new personnel that we have added this year, 694.3 million, the expenditure increase that we just discussed on the previous slide of 18.5 brings our total expenditures to 712.8 million. This puts us at a projected deficit of 17.7 million. So this is where we thought we would be, I know it's not a happy slide to look at, but this is what we knew we would have to work through when the raise was approved. So now moving into our fund balance analysis, based on this current budget of 712.8 million, that would put our target at 142.6 if we wanted to maintain 20% of that in reserves. Given this budget that we are proposing, we would end the year fiscal year 25 at 132.6, that would put us just shy of our target of about $10 million, we'd be at 18.6 million, so a really heavy slide to end this presentation on, but we will see what happens this summer with the legislatures, you know, if they're gonna come back and do anything for us, if not, once the budget's approved, we are gonna immediately move into planning for next year's budget to see what we can do to tighten this and cut the budget.
Yeah, we'll make a couple of points here, so this is where we knew we would be, and you see in the news, there are a lot of districts that are at a place today where we will be at next year, right, we've been able to carry one more year and have this level of support, and I still believe and hope maybe there'll be a special session this summer and it will get handled this summer, if not, maybe it will be handled quickly in the next legislative session. You know, one of the risk factors when you dip below the 20% of fund balance is especially in the market where we are, in the bond market, right, selling so many bonds, what they're gonna want to know is that we have a plan to address it, and so as Karen mentioned, as soon as this budget is approved, we will begin to work internally on options for how to reduce the budget moving forward in case there is no additional funds that come our way, so we'll begin working on that in earnest, really, in September, we'll work on it September, October, November, and then, as I think I mentioned in your update, really, the December workshop will be the time that we will come to the board, and at that point, we may be in a position to need to cut, if we wanted to do any kind of raise, we may need to be cutting $30 million from the budget, so what we will do in that instance is we will just bring basically a menu to the board, and it'll be your decision as to how you do it, but we'll give you all the different options and then you all can tell us how you'd like us to proceed, and, you know, I think part of that, knowing that it'd be a legislative year in January, is we would wanna look to, you know, with a hopeful eye that there would be some relief come before we actually had to institute those changes, so, you know, what could we do that, you know, one of the risks would be that we eliminate a lot of very important positions that support our teachers, and then funds come in in May and we want to add those positions back, but now all the qualified candidates are gone, like we can't get them anymore, so there'll be a balance, but that'll be a conversation really for December, but it's one that is looming for us, we have one year here of grace, kind of, but that is a looming conversation that we'll all have to deal with unless we don't, I think we can just remain hopeful that perhaps there'll be a special session called and that $4 billion that has been allocated for education but not distributed perhaps could get distributed at some point and put us in a better position. I do think, though, that part of our conversation, and we've had it here, but we'll need to have it more directly with our employees, is, you know, even if we were to receive 25 million extra dollars for next year, that wouldn't provide for a raise, you know, that would just make us whole, right, that would be, and that's gonna be hard for everyone to understand, is that we really, we spent money ahead, so we'll have to work to communicate that, but perhaps we'll get more than that and there would be money for a raise, so.
Am I correct that the ADA allotment that we get per student has not been updated since like 2018?
2019.
Oh, I wasn't that far off, so legislatively, that is something we should be trying to work towards as well, right?
That would be the easiest way for them to funnel money through, would be to increase the basic allotment.
First, that's first because that's our major funding.
Correct.
Then, secondly, on that, look at where we are expenditure-wise on just even supplies and so forth, so we haven't had an update in that, it's 2024 and we're going into 25 school year, 2425 school year, so that's a priority to look at. The second one is, I already knew that we needed to be on dyslexia and special education funding, that was, I said that before publicly and to you privately, you know, that that was something we needed to be on. Unfortunately, I know that unless there's a special session, we're not, those aren't gonna be solved even in a special session, but we're not going to get extra funding, and I mean, have you, sometimes you all know, have we heard anything about a special session?
We have not, and I will say on the special ed front, there was traction this year on moving to an enrollment-based funding model for special education because right now, it's an instructional setting model, so at least the discussions are happening, and if it were to pass, what we heard this session was that it's gonna take them a couple of years to implement it, so we probably wouldn't see any of that funding.
Right away.
Even in this biennium if they were to approve it in the next regular session, so at least we know there's discussions happening and they're recognizing the fact that there is a huge funding gap there, but it may take a few years for that to come to fruition if they.
I will tell you that the Texas Dyslexia Coalition that pushed so hard for the dyslexia and that I worked with, the bill, the funding is a priority on their list, so I mean, just so you all know that, that is something that they are seriously, that's their next step in it.
Right, okay.
I think if I had a wish list, and Darren and Karen may see it differently, but I think we see it the same way, like if you were speaking to legislators and they were trying to determine how to, even if it's just how to disperse the money they've already allocated, not even talking about the two ways that I would request would be increase the basic allotment, the other one is let's get some actuaries in there to figure out how to shift us from ADA funding to enrollment funding, and just use the money they have, but let's just change the formulas, and that might even mean that we don't change the basic allotment, maybe the basic allotment stays the same, but we just shift to enrollment instead of ADA, and that's how that money is spent, you know, because that would, that'd be about 30 million for us, right? Which would probably be about our share of the $4 billion that they had, so that, but that alone would take such a huge unknown factor out of our budget, right, because that's just an area of risk because we just have to guess, so.
Yeah, I think there was some like preliminary calculations on that, and it was way above the $4 billion allotment, so I think we can just, I don't know, hope it's not a strategy, so.
But even if they lowered, I mean, I would argue, like even if you lowered the basic allotment, if the basic allotment today is 6160, if that meant you lowered the basic allotment to 6,000 but fully funded us on enrollment, that might mean a $30 million increase for us, you know, I mean.
Yeah, but we're not the only district around, right?
Oh, agreed, but I mean, I'm just saying, like you could, it's just a way to look at, even if they didn't have to spend more money to get us to that, so, those would just be my two ways that I think would be really beneficial, choose how they could allocate what they've already, or distribute what they've already allocated, I guess.
And an increase in the basic allotment would also funnel down to all of those special program allotments because they're weighted funding and the base is the basic allotment, so we would see increases in all of those special programs if they increase that basic allotment.
And they haven't given a cost of inflation raise on it.
No, they haven't changed it since 2019.
So, I mean, that's just crazy, I was looking into it when we were talking, when this budgeting was coming up, so.
Yeah, it's crazy, it isn't on a record surplus.
Yeah, and it's, one of the things that's lost, and Darren or Karen could probably explain this better too, is there used to be a lag in, explain that, the lag in property values and what that meant for us as far as funding and how it changed.
Right, so part of the foundation school program funding formula is they look at, they calculated an entitlement for every district, and then they say, okay, what are you contributing to the pot, which is essentially our local tax collections, well, there used to be a one-year lag on what they would use to calculate that, so we always had that property value growth revenue to live on for one year before it offset on the foundation school program, but now it's current year values, so we are essentially losing whatever we're collecting locally as an increase, it's coming right off the top when they collect, when they calculate the foundation school program, so really, the only way that we can generate more funding is by new kids, and when we get new kids, we need more teachers, we need more supplies, we need, so there really is no way to generate additional funding outside of growth for students.
What year did that change, the property?
2019.
Yeah.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Can you go back to the slide that showed the special ed growth?
Yes.
The one with the 195%? Okay, so that top blue line, the dark blue, what contributed to that total amount?
So that is salaries, everything that is, all of these allotments are tracked by what we call program intent code, so in our budget unit, there is a specific code that we use to track expenditures by special population, so anything associated with special education, whether it be teachers, diagnosticians, you know, support staff at our central office, all of those get charged to a special program intent code that is used towards the compliance requirement here, and that's what you're seeing in that blue line.
So this wasn't just money used to support the children in the classroom, this was anything associated to special education?
Correct.
That was spent last year?
Monitors on the bus, anything that is associated with servicing that set of students, yes.
And any payouts that we may have had due to litigation?
Primarily in the classroom.
Teachers, yes.
But primarily in the classroom.
Primarily, but I'm just asking, like what was not related in the classroom teaching, given that dark blue line, would that be any amount of money that we paid out for any type of litigation related to special education?
I mean, it would be insignificant to the total amount, you know, $95 million, I mean, the majority of that, I would say probably 90% of it is instructional expenses, whether it be teachers or instructional aides.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of impact does adopting a deficit budget have on our bond sales?
Well, we are scheduled to go out for sale again in January, so we will have our ratings calls in December, and like Dr. Knoll mentioned, we're gonna be well underway in our planning, so if we can show the bond rating agencies that we have a plan in place, what always helps us is that we're growing, that's a positive that we have on our side that we're a growing district, so we're generating revenue that way in their eyes, but as long as we can come up with a plan and show them that we have a way to get out of the deficit budget, that should look favorably on us, but you know.
Will it affect our rating, because right now, we're a double A, correct?
I mean, the hope is that if we can show them we have a plan, that it doesn't impact the rating, yes.
I was saying, year one, it will not affect our rating, the first year, as long as what Ms. Garza said, our plan is there to solve the problem before our next sale, which is the next year, so that would have to be, you know, a rapid plan to get us, you know, to where we need to be, but if they see that we have a plan in place, those ratings will stay the same, and those ratings, although if we have the permanent fund guarantee, we're still triple A, but with our double A plus and double A1 ratings, that's still one or two basis points, and when we're selling, this next sale's gonna be 752 million dollars, one basis point is several million dollars, you know, so those basis points that we earn with having that rating is well worth maintaining that fund balance all in itself.
So you don't think the street would expect, hey, why don't you take these haircuts before adopting this deficit budget? before adopting this deficit budget? Like it's great that you have a plan, but why not put it in place before you adopt a deficit budget?
Well, I think if we go into it knowing that we were going to, we had planned to be here. And I will say our rating agents are out of state and they recognize what's going on in the state of Texas. We have had discussions with them about this on previous ratings calls that they know what's happening at the legislative level and funding has not been provided to districts. And they're rating other districts in the state of Texas. So they know the challenges that school districts across the state are facing. So, you know, they're not coming into this blind, like not knowing, why are you guys running a deficit budget? They know what's happening in terms of funding.
And what does Mr. Robach feels confident as well? That the one year and us showing a plan, we won't take a hit at all?
And just for y'all's knowledge, I don't know if the rating agencies, if Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's have AI that listen to everything, but the day after our board meeting, the February workshop, we had a call, deficit budget talked to us. They wanted to know, you know, what we adopted, what our plan was moving forward. You know, even though they had just issued a rating for our sale that we had this past January, right after that board workshop we had in February, they were asking questions that next day after that board meeting. So they have something that triggered some mechanism that they have out there to identify districts that if they say deficit budget or anything like that in a meeting. I'm just assuming that, but.
It's your phone listening to you? Now we're all going to get it on our phone ads.
How do they know we had that conversation that night and gave us a call the next day? Just very, very interesting that they are very attuned to what's going on with technical districts, especially, you know, when we're talking and dealing with the credit worthiness of Connor ISD and selling 500, 700 million dollars in a tranche.
The Courier ran an article on it too.
Yeah, I'm sure they have a Google alert or something. For our neighboring districts, do you know how many of them are planning to adopt or have adopted a deficit budget?
Many, many of them. I know for a fact that one of them is having to cut 68 million dollars out of their budget this year.
And how are they doing that?
Cutting positions.
Positions, I mean, that's people, people.
Yeah, I mean, the reality of any budget, us or anyone, every school district is probably at least 87% salary. We're closer to 89, but it's people. So, you know, when we can, when we get to that point, and hopefully we don't, but if we get to get to that point where there's a menu of things to cut, you know, you can talk about a million different things that make no impact. It's people that make an impact. So you talk about like, oh, if we cut every budget by a certain percentage, that might save a million dollars versus people that will make up the 29.
But Ms. Chase, just to kind of give it in perspective, the last time we had to cut budgets, we did it without cutting a person, not a lost job. We were able to absorb that loss by changing teacher-student ratios, adjustments in our transportation mile, you know.
And how much was the gap that time? How much was the gap that time?
That was about 25 million dollars. So it was a considerable gap.
And did we add it back?
No, and that's.
So there you go. There's no fat to trim there.
And that's a great point. That's our biggest struggle if we get to this point next time is, what year was that, 2012?
11-12.
11-12. We cut, you know, a lot of what you might, bless you, what you may consider like ancillary positions. We cut those from the budget, we never put them back.
Yeah.
So we've been functioning without them. So this time around, the cuts will be felt more directly in the classroom because that's where we would have to cut, right? And so to Mr. Rice's point, one of the benefits of growing is I still believe that we would get to a point where no one would necessarily lose a job. Just they may have a different job, right? Based on the fact of how quickly we grow, natural attrition, retirements, people leaving, you know. And that would be something that we would try to focus on. And that was something that we were able to do in 2012 was early on in that process, you know, December, January, to be able to send out a letter to our employees to say, listen, you're going to hear a lot of talks, we are cutting the budget significantly, but everyone is going to have a job, we just may need to move folks. And so that would be part of our focus is hopefully we could get to that point where it just might mean movement. And we, you know, so in that regard, it's pretty much a straight hiring freeze. You know, we don't replace anybody that leaves kind of deal, we just start to move people around.
So we grow, but we don't grow.
Correct.
And so how does that impact student outcomes? Not in a positive way? And the only way out of this is not in our hands? Like we can't hold this lemonade stand and raise, you know, 20 million dollars?
The only option you have is a vater. I mean, if you want to talk about like what is in your hands is potentially doing a voter-approved tax ratification election, a vater for golden pennies. That is, that is the only mechanism that you all have control over to increase our funding. Everything else is, yes, conversations with those that make decisions. But as far as, you're not powerless, that is the one thing you can do. That, you know, that's a significant process, we've talked about it, it's confusing, it's hard, all the things. But that is the one area that you do have power.
But we could simply call it salaries.
You could, yeah. So what we saw, if you look back last, the last election cycle, I think Fort Bend and.
But they tend not to raise.
Yeah, Clear Creek, both did those, College Station did it. College Station did it, I think, and did purely salaries. I think Clear Creek did it and said salaries and, you know, I think that maybe they raised 10 million a year and they said 8 million was going to be used for salaries and 2 million was going to be used to buy technology, I think is how they do it. It's either them or Fort Bend did it that way. But you have to be, to your point, you have to be very clear because otherwise it's really confusing and people don't understand it.
But those salaries, those were tied to pay increases. We need this out of the hole.
To make, yes.
Like this is not for a pay increase. This would be to like make us whole while the state sits on a record surplus.
Yeah, or you could look at it as to say, you know, if we, like a number we threw out earlier is, if we had to trim 30 million from the budget, that may, that may get us enough money to keep. We cut 30 million to get a 2% raise potentially, you know, to be able to come back, right? And make us.
2% would be stretch, maybe one.
1%, okay, sorry, 1%. So you cut 30 million so you can bring 10 million back as salary because we're 20 million behind. But then it, once again, it's the same situation. It's, you give it once, but it recurs forever, you're always paying for it. So that would be a challenge. So, you know, you could get into a situation, let's just play hypotheticals here, where you said we're going to cut 20 million from the budget, which would make us balanced, but there'll be no raises. And then you did a future vater to say the vater would be used for a raise, right? We balance, the budget's balanced, no raise, a vater is used to give a raise. So you could do it that way.
But then there's only one raise.
There's only one raise, right? You just do it once, right? Exactly, so if you, if you raised 20 million, let's say, through a vater.
12 million per penny.
So 24 million, let's say you did two golden pennies, just for the sake of argument. 24 million, you could give a three, probably a three and a quarter percent raise, one time. Yeah, one time, and then that's it. You know, they'd get that money every year moving forward, but it wouldn't be any future raises. It would just be a one time.
But the 30 million that you would cut to get that, the stress level on our employees in our district, would it be worth the 3% raise?
I mean, the reality is when we, if we have to get to this point, right? Your, the decisions to reduce positions would be increase class sizes, which, you know, you talk about educational outcomes, there's a ton of discussion with that. But in addition to that, there's more specialized kids that have IEPs or modifications that, you know, that now roll into a classroom. But then, you know, and that'd be probably the last layer we try to do, right? You want to, so what you would end up doing is cutting all the positions that support the teachers outside of the classroom. You know, that provide behavior support, that provide curriculum support. So when you remove those positions, those duties, you know, get added to everyone else. So it does create, yeah, so there's not an easy answer to it. That's why we'll create a big menu and we can, and we'll talk about pros and cons of each of those so that we all know them. One of the things that we did in 2012, I think, was, I think Dr. Stockton did just a beautiful job of creating the right mindset in the district. I was a principal at that point and like we all understood, like we're all going to feel pain. And everybody just needs to get on board, we're all going to feel this pain. We're going to do our very best to make it felt evenly across the district so that nobody feels like they got it worse than the other, but we all have to be on the same, on the same team here. And I think we did a nice job of creating that and we can do it again if we have to. Let's just, I'm going to continue to remain positive that we're not going to have to. I'm still hopeful that something may happen before we get there.
What was happening in 2012?
That was just straight up economic downturn.
The state?
The state was out of money.
The state had a deficit. And what is happening right now?
What is happening right now?
The state has a surplus.
They had a $30 billion surplus that they're sitting on. They beer marked 4 billion so far for school districts, but they've got 30 billion that they're sitting on. They can't get out of their own way.
Just for general awareness, what does 17.72 million dollar deficit equate to in personnel? Like how many people?
200 positions roughly?
I mean, that's significant. I just wanted it out there that, I mean, that's significant. And I mean, even if we were to cut in other areas, like you said, it's people, so.
Okay.
So I have a question. So it sounds like to me, since 2012, when the economic downturn occurred, that the first experience was a roughly 20, I think you said 24 maybe?
25 million or something.
So in those, in these 12 years, we've been dealing with this continual annual 20 to 30 million dollar deficit, is that?
No, there was funding that was cut from the state that affected us in the biennium of 20 million dollars. We reduced our budget and had a balanced budget by reducing the budget by 20 million dollars. Our budget was balanced, there was no continual deficit budget. We did the work, we reduced the budget, the budget was balanced.
Do you remember our tax rate at that time? I only have it to 2018 at 1.28.
It was well above this dollar a key.
Yeah, so.
That was before.
Yeah, before any compression.
Any compression.
So my point is, it sounds like we've been dealing with this for a while now, the 20 to 30 million dollar range of a deficit or potential deficit.
No.
We have not.
Like every, so after 2012.
We've had a balanced budget until.
Right, but an anticipated potential, like a funding issue from the state, maybe not?
Well, since House Bill 3 came in in 2019, that is where the issue has come in because there's no mechanism within House Bill 3 that allows for raises or provides any funding for inflation increases.
So in 2019, that changed legislatively.
With the implementation of House Bill 3, that is when the struggle has come on the school.
Really got real.
Providing raises for the employees.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, essentially, our math works for two years at a time.
Right, and that's a part of our plan.
Yeah, just kind of, but now we've been under the current formula since 2019. So this one's gone a lot longer, but normally every two years, the math changes. Hopefully for the good, sometimes it's for the bad, but.
I just wanted, I wanted to clarify that, have it out there.
It was really House Bill 3 was the culprit.
And since then, have we been, like with the plan you talked about, like if someone hears that we're doing a, or we're considering a deficit budget, they want to know what's your plan?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Garza, thank you very much, we appreciate you all. That will, that will conclude our workshop. I did pass around a sign-in sheet, I hope it made it all the way around. If it hasn't, we will adjourn, time is 8:26.